Okay, it is 6:32. We will call a meeting to order. Special Board meeting, June 25th, 2025. And join me in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Roll call, please.
All right. We have John.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Trudy.
Here.
Sue. Here. Laura. Here. We have four.
Very good. Board member, conflict of interest statement? Anyone? No? Very good. Public comment on agenda items.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to take the podium, please?
There's no microphone.
Can you speak aloud now then?
There's a mic up there. We'll get him.
It's in the ceiling.
Yes, it's there.
Oh, it's there. Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you for all you guys do. Appreciate that. My name is Alan Maves, and I would just like to make a comment regarding the budget adoption. I believe it's Agenda Item 10C.
Yep. Well, that's amendments, but yeah, okay.
I just wanted it to be mentioned that the Parks Commission and its employees are not only responsible for the maintenance improvement of Cooperation Park, but also Devo Beach, Marina Park, the Boat Launch, Hideaway Park, two cemeteries, the Township Hall grounds, and in the winter, our township sidewalks. I may have missed some responsibilities, I'm sure I have, but the Parks Commission is responsible for a lot of manpower and equipment to maintain and improve township property, not just the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Public comment period is closed. Approval of meeting agenda?
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Sure.
I'd like to add the KCI bill for printing our taxes, summer taxes to be added to the bill's report.
How much that is?
We only have to send the postage, and the postage is $1,967. Well, actually, round it to $68. 1-9-6-8. That's all we have to send them, and then they...
That's postage?
Postage only, yes.
And that's Item 8A. And two bills. KCI and... Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? No? Requesting approval of meeting agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? And approval of previous minutes? If you had a chance to look at these. Any changes to the board meeting minutes from June 19th, 2025, special meeting?
No.
No? Do we have a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the proposed meeting minutes for June 19th, 2025, 6:30 special meeting.
I'll support that.
Was that Laura?
Yes.
So the motion on the table is to accept the June 19th, 2025, special meeting minutes, proposed meeting minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports, bills.
All right. We have, on the reports, seven bills in the total of, or seven invoices in the amount of $50,806.53, and then add the KCI to that.
Okay.
I do bring my little handy dandy calculator, but $52,774.53.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the bills for payment? Or questions? With a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Support?
I'll support that.
And any more discussion?
I just have a question. This would be, this has to go on the credit card to KCI?
We can. They need the check by the day they, she said, by the day they print, so we could overnight a check if we wanted to, or I was, thought it might be the easiest way to do it is just to put it on the credit card.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Yes. And there, in case people are wondering, they're projecting the first or second of June, they'll have them done and in the mail.
July?
Sorry, July, sorry. Yeah, July 1st or 2nd is what she said. So I think plan on the 2nd. And they're in Grand Rapids, which is where all of our mail is sorted, so it should be a little faster coming back that way.
And this is for the summer tax bills.
Summer tax bills.
Perfect. Okay. So, good. So all in favor of these bills? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Old business. Is there any? I have none. And new business.
The new contract. It's just the new contract. It was at $217.68 per quarter, and they've raised it to $230 per quarter. That's a difference of $12.96.
Okay. This is a five-year contract, 60 months. And this is our postage meter and the scale, right? Yep.
It's in the SSSD.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve that contract.
Okay.
Put in those.
And a second?
I'll support that.
And all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Boat launch maintenance.
So I spoke with Doug, I guess I'll make a motion first. Motion on the table is to contract with a company to re-stripe the parking stall lines to include the white paint, the blue paint for the handicap, and I think there's a couple personal vehicle parking spots as well. Basically, re-stripe the entire parking lot again.
So the motion is to put it out for bid? Is that the, yeah? Okay. We need a second on that? Support?
I'll support that.
Okay. And discussion?
So I think we've been out there four times now launching there. Most of the lines are well faded, pretty much gone. Obviously, with the busy holiday coming up, I would have liked it to be done by then, but I spoke with Doug a couple times. He said they do have the equipment to do it, but they're just strapped on time right now. I talked to him on the phone today again, and he said he has nothing to spare, and that even himself was out we whipping cards. So obviously, there's quite a bit of fund balance in the township launch budget, so I don't think.
Okay.
That's too bad of an idea to reach out and see if they know.
Do you think, you know, I, like you, would like it done by the holiday. What's the likelihood of that? If we can put it out and get them? I don't know. I mean, yeah, okay.
And I don't want to be a premium, just because...
No. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we can just, we can type up something. How much time do you want to give? Five, seven days?
I think a week would be okay.
Okay. And we'll post that on...
Throw it on Facebook and...
Yeah.
On the website.
Yep. Okay.
How's the HVAC working, Sue?
Gordon's not here to help us. Okay. So the motion on the table is to have the boat launch area re-stripped. We're going to put it out for bid, give it seven days, put it on the social medias, on the township website, and we'll, what's seven days? Who has a calendar? There you go.
By the...
By what?
July 7th.
She started for tomorrow, and I have it for...
Yeah, okay, so let's do it tomorrow. 2025.
26.
Okay. Is that seven days?
Yep.
Okay. So July 3rd, make that decision. Okay.
Oh, yeah. I just missed two minutes, right?
Okay.
Too small.
Will a decision be made before the next meeting, or we will go for approval at the next meeting?
I, what do you want to do?
Just throw it on the next agenda.
Okay. All right.
We're not going to hit the fourth weekend, so...
Okay. So this will be old business, old business on the July 8th, 2025 meeting. Okay. So motion on the table. We have, we have support. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Budget amendments.
Okay. There's a few of them.
Okay.
What we need to do is, we need to take $101 from the 101-223-80100 accounting fees and put that to the 101-101-94800 Township Computer Services. The next one, we need to take $6,594 from the 101-266-80100 attorney fees and put that to the 101-101-93500 liability insurance. And then $26,428 needs to be pulled from 101-901-9700 to Building and Grounds and put to 101-215-80100 professional fees. And then the next one is $1,244 from the 101-253-85100. That's a treasurer's mailing of postage, and that needs to be put to the 101-257-93300. And that's accessory software. And $36,572 from the 101-901-97002 Building and Grounds, and that needs to go to the 101-446-99500. That's the inter-fund transfer out. And then after that, $28,167 from the 101-000-39000 General Fund Balance, and that needs to go to 101-446-99500. That's the inter-fund transfer out. And then $3,000 from the 101-567-80100 Contracted Services for the Cemetery needs to go to 101-265-80100 Building Land Improvements. And then $2,406 from the 101-266-80100 Attorney Fees goes to the 101-265-93000 Building Repairs and Maintenance. And then $400 from the 101-528-80100 Refuge, the collection, to the 101-265-93000, and that's Building Repairs and Maintenance again. And then $711...
Nothing, sorry. I was remembering what we were doing.
101-262-70401, and that's the election coordinator, and that needs to go to the 101-265-93000 Building Repairs and Maintenance. And then $283 from the 101-754-75400. That's the veteran peer bricks goes to the 101-265-80100 Building Contracted Services. And that has to be, and $9,684 from the 101-309-94100 Contingency goes to the 206-000-69900, and that's the inter-fund transfer in required. And these were made because they weren't budgeted enough for, we have to do this.
Where's... The...
Taking the leftover money from frying, or what was purchased?
No, no, because of the deficit. I thought we did it for the...
You already approved that at a pre-appeal meeting, right? Because that's in 96. Was it $109,000 and it's now 96? I was going to correct it to the actual number needed.
Right.
Yeah? You already approved that.
But it still had to be a transfer. I don't see that. It was, had to be, still had to be, we approved it, the internet? Okay. Okay. I'm fine then. Yeah.
We did approve it.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure it's covered. For the, because it had to come out of the roads. Added to the roads budget. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. 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 It was kind of like a quick thing today. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve these budget adjustments.
So we have a motion on the table to approve the budget adjustments according to the schedule provided. Do we have a support for that?
I'll support that.
And any more discussion?
Jonathan's looking.
Just looking.
Okay. Have you...
And this is for the current, this budget amendments are for the current project, not the new one.
Okay. All right. Are we all set then? Yeah? Okay. So we have the motion, we have support, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item D. So I am going to, I'll just read through this quickly. The General Appropriations Act, Tuscaraw Township, Sheboygan County, Michigan. A resolution to establish a General Appropriations Act for Tuscaraw Township to define the powers and duties of the Tuscaraw Township officers in relation to the administration of the budget and to provide remedies for refusal or neglect to comply with the requirements of this resolution. The Board of Trustees of Tuscaraw Township resolves, Section 1, Title. The resolution shall be known as the Tuscaraw Township General Appropriations Act. Section 2, Chief Administrative Officer. The supervisor shall be the chief administrative officer and shall perform the duties of the chief administrative officer enumerated in this act. Section 3, Fiscal Officer. The clerk shall be the fiscal officer and shall perform the duties of the fiscal officer enumerated in this act. Section 4, Public Hearings on the Budget. For general law townships pursuant to MCLA 141.412, notice of a public hearing on the proposed budget was published in the Sheboygan Daily Tribune newspaper on June 7th, 2025, and a public hearing on the proposed budget was held on June 19th, 2025. Section 5, Millage Levy. The Tuscaraw Township Board shall cause to be levied and collected the general property tax on all real and personal property within the township upon the current tax roll in an amount equal to .9857 mils, as reduced by MCL 211.34D, as set forth by the Tax Allocation Board in the 2025 tax year. Along with the voter-authorized millages of .9892 for fire protection, .0616 for street light, and 4.3 for police purposes on real property. Section 6, Estimated Revenues. General Fund, $830,463. Special Assessment Fire Protection, $320,917. Police, $1,475,648. Sewer Debt, O&amp;M, RRI, $4,566,778.86. Street Lights, $20,000. Boat Launch, $16,000. Section 7, Estimated Expenditures. General Fund, $907,824.2. Special Assessment Fire Protection, $308,920. Police, $1,475,648. Sewer Debt, O&amp;M, RRI, $856,813. Street Lights, $34,000. Boat Launch, $4,700. Section 8, Adoption of Budget by Reference. The General Fund Budget of Tuscaraw Township is hereby adopted by reference with revenues and activity expenditures as indicated in Sections 6 and 7 of this act. Section 9, Adoption of Budget by Cost Center. The Board of Trustees of Tuscaraw Township adopts the 2025-2026 Fiscal Year General Fund Fire Protection, Police, Sewer, Street Lights, and Boat Launch budgets by Cost Center. Township officials responsible for the expenditures authorized in the budget may expend township funds up to but not to exceed the total appropriation authorized for each cost center and may make transfers among the various line items contained in each, in the Cost Center appropriation. However, no transfers of appropriations for line items related to personnel or capital outlays may be made without prior board approval by budget amendment. Section 10, Appropriation Not a Mandate to Spend. Appropriations will be deemed maximum authorizations to incur expenditures. The fiscal officer shall exercise supervision and control to ensure that expenditures are within appropriations and shall not issue any township order for expenditures that exceed appropriations. Section 11, Limit on Obligations and Payments. No obligation shall be incurred against and no payment shall be made from any appropriation account unless there is sufficient unencumbered balance in the appropriation and sufficient funds are or will be available to meet the obligation. Section 12, Periodic Financial Reports. The fiscal officer shall provide the board and at the board meeting immediately following the end of each fiscal quarter and the final board meeting of the fiscal year, a report of fiscal year-to-date revenues and expenditures compared to the budgeted amounts in the various funds of the township. Section 13, Budget Monitoring. Whenever it appears to the chief administrative officer or the board that the actual improbable revenues in any fund will be less than the estimated revenues which appropriations from such fund were based, and when it appears that the expenditure shall exceed an appropriation, the fiscal officer shall present to the board recommendations to prevent expenditures from exceeding available revenues or appropriations for the current fiscal year. Such recommendations shall include proposals for reducing appropriations, increasing revenues, or both. Section 14, Violations of this Act. Any obligation incurred or payment authorization in violation of this resolution shall be void and shall subject any responsible official or officials or employee or employees to disciplinary action as outlined in PA 621 of 1978 and the Tuscaraw Township Personnel Manual. Section 15, Board Adoption. Can we go ahead and fill this out now? Okay. So we need a motion to adopt the foregoing resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by?
I'll support that.
Okay. Thank you. Motion made by Sue Fisher, seconded by Lori Smith, to adopt the foregoing resolution. Upon roll call, the following voted aye. Madam Clerk?
John?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Laura, yes.
The following voted nay. None. The supervisor declared the motion carried and the resolution duly adopted on this 25th day of June 2025. And we will sign that. Very good. Thank you.
Do you want to...
What?
Do you want to have those ones here for backing the budgets?
Okay. How do we handle that?
We have two. We'll just add it at the end.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Okay.
Jonathan has those totals, don't you? You have the full budget?
Yeah.
And everybody's full budget?
Did we get there? Okay. There's some discussion. We need some clarification on that, I think.
Yeah. We don't have a current planning commission. I understand that some people are reading differently into that, but until we can get clarification from the attorney, I'd like to see this table.
Okay. And that, that question is out to legal this afternoon, so, so we'll table that and bring it back in July. Set the 2025-2026 meeting dates. They are here. We will post them. The motion on the table is to set the regular meeting dates for the fiscal year 2025-2026, that the regular meeting of the Tuscaraw Township Board of Trustees is the second Tuesday of every month. The dates are listed, and that the budget adoption will be done on or before June 30th of 2026. That's the motion. I will make that motion. Do we have support?
I'll support that.
Okay. Any discussion? I've been through the calendar a couple times. I don't see any conflicts. Anybody aware of one that I missed?
No, I think it actually works pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't have a holiday really to jostle around.
As long as the HVAC gets fixed.
Yeah, hopefully.
I'm the only one hot, so I would...
We can put that...
I'm just having a coffee surge.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah, there you go, yeah, okay. And who seconded that?
I did.
Laura.
Laura, okay. So any more discussion, any concerns? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll get these dates posted. We'll have them in the window and Karen puts them on the website as well. That's good. Corrective action, quit, claim deed. So, research, doing some research for the Indian River Area Library, I reached out to Equalization in Sheboygan to say, hey, who owns the building and the grounds? Because the library has a, a, a capital improvement plan, something planned for their future, which will benefit the entire community. I talked to Carrie Bowles, who works in the Equalization Department at the, at Sheboygan County, and she looked up the three parcels that pertain to this building and the grounds surrounding it. And she said, well, yes, there's a deed, but it's, there's a part missing. And I've, in the support we've given, the email from Carrie, and she said she didn't think it would be a problem, but referred us to Jerry Malloy at Sheboygan Title. He weighed in and said it's a simple fix. What's missing from the, is it liber and, liber, liber?
Liber.
In page is the block 21. The parcels are correct. It, she, he recommended doing a corrective, quit, claim deed, adding block 21, which will then correct everything. But there's history, which I'm not aware of.
There's history, and it was always supposed to be corrected because the library does not own everything.
Right.
And so if we do this, this is keeping everything the way it is? This was township property, library came on, and the police department is, you know, nobody else is worried about it, that's fine. I just, I just think that something should be in the township's name.
Well.
We have the parking, or no, no.
Well, it's just the police and the library.
I think we own.
Part of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
I, I have a real problem with that.
Well, how do you want to handle it? I mean, I, I don't know, how did it, how did the township not own any of the building?
They did. Part of it was to get a grant way back when, and they all did it together, but it was always supposed to go back. There was the township property. And then the library came in.
I can look at the library minutes too, because it was explained to me that Cindy Pettis won who got the grant. But that doesn't mean, I know that originally it was supposed to be shared still between the library and the township. So I don't know how the police ended up owning things and the township seemingly owning nothing.
Like a little mess.
Yeah, so I, I do think it's something we need to work out, for sure.
Okay.
I, I just.
It doesn't make any sense.
So a grant, let me make sure I'm understanding this. So a grant was written to do what, build the building?
No, 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 there was a, no, there was a mill.
This is about a village.
Okay.
All of us taxpayers paid for the.
The building that's here.
Part of it, there was a grant from the library, but the majority of it came through, I believe. I'd have to go back.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, because I thought it was like $250,000 or something from the library was the grant. And don't vote me on that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, like, all of this is like, I would have to look back to really know the facts. But I know we have the minutes from way back when, so I could see at least what it says from the library's side. Yeah, because no one knows the history, really. So it's hard to piece it together.
Eric's gone, Craig, Craig would probably know. He's the only one that was on the board at the time. And, you know, just Eric would say these things, you know, just to make sure what it's like, no work was ever done to, to correct it.
Okay, so at some point in time. Well, okay, so this needs to be tabled indefinitely. I mean, I.
Well, and I'll look into the library side of it too.
Yeah.
At least what I can find out. And then hopefully we can piece it together and figure out what to do.
Yeah, because it would make sense that all three of us own portions.
Something, yeah. And as long as we own our half, I don't really mind. My other half is in.
And the yard on the outside.
Yeah, that's really all I care about is that side of the lawn.
Does this slow you up at all, Kelsey, if we?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know, yeah.
It does.
All right, well, we'll have to get on this.
Can you look in the community grant? Because it came up when we started the community grant, like, a year ago, two years ago. Some notes in there, maybe.
So try, if it's ready by the drawing even. Now, I don't want to mess you guys up, so.
Yeah, I think it's more just, we want to make sure that we own that south lawn so that when we build it, we don't get kicked out of there for, you know.
Exactly.
Parked out or something.
Right, well, and, and we have, you provided, the library provided the township with the tenant in common.
Yes, and that's the only thing we have.
And then what we have here is a deed from 1996. Excuse me, 1994. We'd have to look up these parcel numbers.
I know, '94 is when we moved in this building.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we did a title search when we did the community grant. Is that big for someone?
Okay.
Building grant meeting, what you.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, interesting, okay. The culvert on Club Road. We're in a meeting this week, oh, well, so the motion is to replace the culvert on Club Road, south of M68, that will, near Bigby Coffee and Dan's Auto Repair, per the road commission. The two businesses have agreed to pay for the culvert. There'll be no township monies expended to replace the culvert. The road commission has made an agreement with MDOT to use their, one day's lab, MDOT labor to remove the old culvert and put in a larger culvert that's been, if that is in, it's failing. The two businesses, Bigby Coffee and Dan's Auto Repair, have agreed verbally to share equally the cost of the culvert, which the invoice is there from the road commission. They will share equally the $5,040. What the road commission has asked for is a letter of agreement from the township whereby the businesses make, give a check for their amounts to the township. The township then writes a check to the road commission. It benefits the businesses whereby they can claim that as a donation. That's the motion to, is the board authorizing the supervisor to write a letter of agreement to the road commission saying that we will collect these monies from Bigby Coffee and Dan's Auto Repair and then write a check to the road commission for which we prefer not to enter into that letter of agreement.
My only concern is if we enter into that agreement and Bigby doesn't come with the.
Checks before we're done.
Yeah.
They didn't put a timeframe on it. They did in a soft way. I can ask that question? Checks first, letter upon receipt?
Yep.
So do we want to make, amend the motion to say upon receipt of checks? That the board has, gives authorization to the supervisor to write the letter of agreement? Or do you want to table it until July? It's only 10 days.
I think with that amendment.
Okay. Two checks before. Okay, I will reach out, okay, so the motion on the table is, will the board authorize the supervisor to write a letter of agreement upon receipt of a check from Bigby Coffee and Dan's Auto Repair?
$2,520, $2,520 from each of them would then total to $5,040.
Correct. And upon receipt of those checks, and they clear the bank?
Uh huh.
Supervisor is given authorization, granted authorization to write, or, letter of agreement. Okay, so that's the motion. I'll make that motion, support, or any support, and then we can talk about changes if we need to.
I'll.
Yeah, okay, there you go. Any further discussion, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I will reach out to them. Okay. Summer school, it sounds like summer school, summer school, it is. Resolution for the collection of summer school, summer, comma, school property taxes.
Okay, so the Inland Lakes Schools had a board resolution number two on October 28th, 2024, to have their taxes, school operating and debt collected half in the summer taxes and half on the winter taxes. So that way their income would be more equally dispersed through the school year because schools have a hard time meeting their monetary needs until they start getting that December taxes. So as a taxpayer, if you're non, if you're homestead, you're not going to see the difference. But if you're not a homestead, then you're gonna, your bill's gonna be half in the summer and half in the winter, where it was before, always in the winter. So the cost, if we only collect the SETT and the county allocations during the summer, the state of Michigan pays us $2.50 per parcel. Inland Lakes has agreed to pay the $2.50 per parcel. And how we collect that from them is the first disbursement in summer, I have a form from the county that I take number of parcels times $2.50, and then they'll, that'll come off their first disbursement. So we get to get the money first before, we don't have to wait for them to pay us. We take it right off. So I think this is a great thing for the school. A lot of schools are going to this, not just in the lakes. I'm just thankful we only have one school district in our township. So some aren't so lucky. But I'm hoping, what we require is we have an agreement for collection of summer school property taxes. The agreement is made on the 21st day of June. This talks about the, what I just said to you. And then, on the back, they want this board to authorize that we agree that we will provide this service for them. So they listed it as a resolution, but we're just, it's a board motion. They do resolutions at the school board, but we normally do motions. So maybe just put that as a motion. So I would like to move that this board approves us collecting the school operating and debt, half in the summer, half in the winter, and we will get our $2.50 from the school instead of from the state.
Okay, motion on the table, do we have support?
I'll support.
And any additional discussion? The only thing I read was in the resolution from the school under the now therefore be it resolved that, item two, that this will be that the school board shall adopt a resolution annually acknowledging its decision to impose summer taxes on an ongoing basis, annual resolution. Sounds like they plan to do this from here, here to four, yeah, okay.
That's the impression I'm getting.
Okay, all right.
So they're probably going to want us to vote on it every year, so. After they get it, after they do their resolution.
Yeah, we can put it, yeah, okay.
And I think it'll be a lot, it'll come much sooner.
Yes.
Since this is the first year, it's kind of coming late. But if they made their resolution in October, I'm sure this will be on our agenda in November, so.
Correct, okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, we have support. Any additional questions or discussion?
Who wants to support?
Sue.
Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, okay. Oh, I have.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, we don't know the actual, but we'll mount yet. Still waiting to hear from USDA. They wanted us to put aside an RRI for the first, for phases one and two back here. We're not collecting any O&amp;M yet because it's not ready for hookup. But we do have to transfer the amount for the commercial district from the additional REU bank account to the RRI. Yes, I believe $10,600?
And three, I think.
$10,300?
$10,600.
Thirty?
Yeah.
What was the amount?
Three? We'll have to look it up.
I apologize.
Okay, that's okay.
$10,600 plus.
Yes, yeah.
And this is on the original, which is the business district, which we'll call it something different, but we need to come up with a firm name for these.
Call that one A and this one B, no.
Original.
Original, original recipe.
And then, well, this is the second part of that. So just for the RRI, that's, the motion I'm making is that we transfer the money from the additional REU bank account to the RRI account prior to June 30th.
Got it. Okay, so a motion on the table made by Sue. Do we have support?
I'll support that.
Okay, any other questions, discussion, explanation?
And I believe this is the dollar amount that it's been every year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's something we do, it's something we do all the time.
It's required by USDA.
Okay, all right, so that was my question, is that we can expect to see this?
For 40 years.
Yeah, so would we normally, just, as out of curiosity, would we normally do this right this time of year? When would you, I mean, is there a better time?
I, I used to do it earlier, but not much.
It says quarterly.
I know they say quarterly, but.
Why can't we do quarterly?
Uh, tracking might be a little more, I don't know. I don't know, we'll stay on that discussion.
Because we've been taking it out of the state park money that was given to us for that purpose. That's why we did it annually.
Okay.
And.
So when that runs out, then we need to look at it a different way?
Oh, we're, that's, yeah. Well, you're getting, as new businesses come in though, and they expand, it's been here, there are reus. There is additional monies coming in that's going to help.
Hmm, okay. Tuscaraw Township has done it annually, just historically.
Clerk and the treasurer would love to do it quarterly? I will.
Okay, but by history, which has been done annually, just for ease. Yeah, okay. And typically earlier in the year. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of transferring the monies from additional REU? All in favor of transferring the monies from additional REUs bank account to the RRI bank? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And last item, adopting the budgets. Budgets, do you want to look at, do we want to look at Jonathan's? Let Jonathan read through them, or do we need to? How do you want to handle it, Sue?
Just that, we adopt each one. I don't know how they've been doing it the last few years. We would adopt the one-on-one budget and state how much... Well, no, we just adopted as presented.
By section or just in its totality with the...
We did, we did by section.
Okay, by cost center?
By funds.
Oh, okay.
By funds, not by cost center. We do have to, what was it, the fire was changed.
Oh, yeah, you were gonna want to flip that to the fire.
That's on your general appropriations, though, each one of those funds is on the general appropriations document, they've dotted them out.
Okay, so just go with...
Then it'll be on the website for everybody else that wants to go and look at individual?
Yeah, it's on the website now, but there is a change to the fire.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the...
My math is a hundred percent correct on here, but...
Get your thing out.
I don't even understand the calculus.
So for the one-on-one, the estimated revenues, the eight thirty-four sixty-three, and expenditures, nine hundred seven thousand eight twenty-four. For the fighter, this one's not correct.
It's, is it on this addition?
Yes. Three hundred and twenty thousand nine seventeen for the revenues and three oh eight nine twenty for the expenses. And it, I want to explain why that changed, it's been some time.
Yeah, absolutely.
There was not enough collected this last year, so we're having to transfer, money transfer out from the general fund to cover that fund. So then to collect enough to pay back the general fund, so that's why the increase. The police revenues, one million four seventy-five six forty-eight, and the expenditures, one million four seventy-five six forty-eight. The sewer debt, O and M, RRI, four million five hundred sixty-six thousand seven seventy-nine. And expenditures, eight hundred fifty-six thousand eight thirteen. Streetlights, twenty thousand. For revenues, streetlights expenditures, thirty-four thousand. Again, here, we have a very high fund balance in the streetlights, so reducing the mileage rate to use up some of that fund balance, don't need to have as much as we have. Boat launch, there's, that's just, there's no mileage for that, sixteen thousand revenue and forty-seven hundred dollars expenditures. Make a motion to adopt those budgets, we send those figures.
I second that.
And discussion? Nope.
I'm just run, I'm just running the numbers, because I like to run the numbers.
Okay, all right, so no, so, no further discussion, all in favor of adopting the budgets as presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on this, everyone. Okay, public comments? Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Patrick McGuinness. I'd like to point out tonight, there are twelve people total at this meeting. Every one of the people that are here are either employees or volunteers at the township. Lately, there's been a lot of discord on social media about how this board is hiding facts of how they operate from the general public. If the general public doesn't show up, that doesn't mean the board's hiding something, it just means all they want to do is complain. They can start showing up, voice their concerns, as I have for many years, and you get listened to, and action gets taken, and results happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep? I'm gonna bring mine right up here.
Yeah, okay, so we did pass it. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Do you, do you want to clarify that? Go ahead, no, go ahead, I think that's important.
No, it, it was, it was the April eighth meeting. We approved the budget adjustment with the GL members.
Okay.
For the special...
I just started panicking here.
Yeah, well, we've had no, no...
I didn't want you to go home and not sleep today.
No loss of, lack of meetings. Okay, any other public comment? Public comments are closed at seven twenty-nine. Board comments?
I'm happy that we're only at fifty-seven minutes today. I, can I...
Absolutely.
I just, Al, thank you, I, I recognize the fact that the way the budget shows, and we're making changes throughout the year about that. Doug's contractor, his application states that he is responsible for every property in the township. And that was done for the purpose of having pride on all the properties, not just Cooperation Park and Devo Beach. Because there had been some issues with that. So, but, I don't think it's, the, the funding should be spread out. It was all combined, yeah, it was all combined at one point, Jane might remember that, and but it just never sat right with me, so.
Right.
So I like how we're gonna be working forward to getting it corrected, but I just, our, our guy in charge as an employee of the township has to have pride in all of the properties.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify, I thank you for what you, what you said.
Any other comments? No, you know, there's a, there's a picture, photograph, and Pat, you and I have talked about it off and on over the past several months. It is a photograph of just Cooperation Park, and I don't think we realize the magnitude of the size of that park, how it's changed over the years. I believe, Help Me, the idea was dropped by Donna Bass McClechy.
Oh, she was part of the whole town commission.
But, but when you sit and think about it, I would encourage people to go out to the website and look for the, Help Me Out, the recreation plan, or Google search it. There's, there's a listing of the properties. I would like to, in our free time, come up with the acreage that we maintain in our township. What did Gordon tell me recently? His officers patrol forty-two square miles, Help Me, I don't know.
Forty-four.
Forty-four square miles of area. Proportionally, I think, guessing, we have far more in the way of parks and public lands than other townships in Chippewa County. Right now, we have three people maintaining all of our properties and cleaning up from the storm that we seem, some of us have missed, forgotten about, maybe not.
Not my house.
Not my house either, it's, we're still a hot mess out there. It's, it's, it's a lot.
You added to your mess, Sue.
But the original stuff is still there. Didn't get taken care of.
It's a benefit of not living in town.
Yeah, 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 so the, the point is, we are blessed. We are blessed with a lot of natural resources, our lakes, our rivers, our streams, the forests, the conservancy lands, the parks that people who came before us foresaw the need for. I personally feel an obligation to take care of it for those coming after. So that when that last payment is made on that fortieth year, they can throw a celebration, maybe at the park that has grown even bigger, right? Maybe, I hope, I really hope. And that wherever we are at that point in time, we will, we will cheer too. So it'll lend a hand, let, even if it's nothing more than, you know, pick up after yourself, say thank you. Enjoy our area when you're here. Let's get out there while the weather's nice and enjoy it. Thank you, board, for all your hard work on this budget, for the education of all of us newbies, Chris, for the long hours, Dawn, Jane and Pat, everybody who's come to support, thank you, thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
All in favor? Do we have a support? Support, all in favor, aye, meeting adjourned seven thirty-three.